Islamic microfinance is becoming an increasingly popular mechanism for poverty alleviation, especially for developing countries around the world. This microfinance service adheres to the principles of Islam as a form of social responsibility. Yona Islamic microfinance is the Islamic microfinance of choice in the Gambia, trustworthy and reliable. At Yona Islamic microfinance, we provide savings products, current accounts, financing products in conformity with Islam. In addition, Yona Islamic microfinance also offers local and international remittances, Takaful Fund, management of Zakat, management of Awkaf, trading and investment, and building of strategic partnerships to bring financial services to the doorstep of the poor with donor projects, madrasas, youth organizations, women groups, and farmer organizations. Make a choice with Yona Islamic microfinance today. For more information on Yona Islamic microfinance, call 377 2151 or 9832151 or visit Yona head office at Tepa Garage Bakwate or visit any Yona branch located countrywide near you.
Also from Ostend Link has been information. Let me also welcome the Lord Mayor of Banjul, the worshiped Rahim Malik Law, who has written her name in the historical annals of this country by being the first woman mayor of Banjul, the deputy mayor of Banjul City Council, the chief executive officer of the Banjul City Council. I understand, Honorable Mayor, your chief of staff is also part of your delegation. We would also want to congratulate and welcome the implementers of the project, Jonas and your team from Ostend, Gano and your team from the Gambia, and of course, the finance director of the Banjul City Council. I must say, since this link between Banjul and Ostend began in 2003, this is the first time in the history of this relationship that the mayor of Ostend has visited the Gambia and thereby creating a precedence that we will want to see continuously, mayors from Ostend and Banjul have visited each other from time to time. Our meeting here this morning is based on table with Banjul and made sure that the EU fund this project. The project is a huge one and of course, I'm sure the mayor of Ostend will delve into that very shortly and we will have a response by the mayor of Banjul, who today will be the mouthpiece of all the citizens of Banjul. Let me also say that the bringing forward of the town hall has created much visibility for this project. Before, most people did not know what the EU project encaps about the EU project. I'm sure my fellow journalists here will be able to ask some pertinent questions later on and as we finish the Q and A, the honorable mayor, our worshiped Lord Mayor Malik Law is today so pleased that she is going to confer the honorary citizenship to the mayor of Ostend as well as the deputy mayor as well. So without going much further, I would like to invite the honorable mayor of Ostend to just give us a short overview of the EU project, which is very dear to his heart and want to make sure that it completes in peace and harmony. Mayor, please.
Thank you for the citizen ownership. I'm very delighted with that. Honorable Lord Mayor, media, and dear Banjulians, citizens of Ostend's sister city. Assalamualaikum. It's a great honor to address you here as the mayor of Ostend, the sister city of Banjul since 2003. Next year, it will be 20 years. That means next year, the link between these two cities will be 20 years young and that's definitely something very remarkable, something we can be proud of. For the hospitality and great care during this visit. This visit has also allowed me to strengthen ties with my colleague mayor and I have been impressed with her efforts in Banjul. But also internationally, she advocates so strongly for women's rights and women empowerment. International level. To implement, ladies and gentlemen, a project of 3 million euro. It's around 170 million dollars. That's not easy. The roads is often very bumpy. uplifting and transformative for Banjul city and all Banjulans. We therefore must take it as success together. The planting of the trees in the city on the beach will help prepare for hotter temperatures and rising sea levels. The protection of the mangroves will also protect Banjul against floods, floats, and the boatwork should generate income through sustainable ecotourist activities. At Krab Island, a unique place will be created which people from all over Gambia will want to visit. It will be a place for sustainable development, learning with a focus on digital skills, innovation, and culture through, for example, the creation of a radio station. It is in our common interest that we continue to work together. And I hope that this EU project is only the start. Peer-to-peer learning in the field of city planning. GIS and IT is one of the cornerstones of the projects and colleagues in my city will be happy to receive colleagues from Banjul and we hope this can be a great learning opportunity in the next months. Jerejev.
Very much Lord Mayor. Tamalane, as you rightly said, 3 million euro is quite indeed a huge amount of money. But we would want to say that Banjul City Council and its diligent staff have been able to use good governance and apply due diligence to make sure that this project goes through using the best practices that are internationally recognized. So on that note, I want to thank.
On that note, I want to thank my team and the councilors, especially the deputy mayor, who did extremely well during this process. I am so proud of him. I am really so proud of him. He saws me within these days that he can do a lot. And to Mr. Bachili, sir, I am always very grateful to you and your team. And I mean it. Anybody who knows Mayor Law will know that I'm not saying that I'm a sweet suitor, but whatever comes from my heart, you can see it on my face. And if I said to Bachili that I am grateful with your team, I mean it. Because Bachili as the CEO is the force of the project. Many people will ask, why I will not seeing the mayor as the face of the project? I comes in when it is necessary. But as the mayor said, it's for the people of Banjul. This is why I am not in front or I am not on the face. But where it is necessary, I come and stand and take my position as the mayor and as the custodian of the project. To deputy mayor of Ostend, a woman of substance and a colleague who always encourage me to have confidence in me or to add more confidence in me. You can say anything you want, but nobody will argue that Mayor Law doesn't have a confidence. I am full of it. It depends on the way I receive it or the way I use it. Silke, thank you so much. And for your information, the mayor has over 60% of his staffs are women. So again, I want to congratulate him for that as well. And he told me yesterday, he said, "Mayor Law, you are going for an election in May 17th or 18th in Kisumu, Kenya." He said to me, "I'm going to be your campaign manager" and I want to thank you all.
We would like to say thank you to both mayors for those very strong words, words of encouragement, words of gratitude, especially to the people that they serve. When these projects end, it is going to be the people that matter. The mayor of Banjul has said it, the mayor of Ostend has also said it. These are just people who are in the forefront, serving the people that elect them in office. Mayor Law said that mayors come and go, but I will add to there, the people remain. And well, what the people will always think about both of these two mayors is that they were the ones that implemented this project and they'll always be very grateful to these mayors and their names will always remain in the annals of the history of these two countries, that is Belgium and the Gambia. Now ladies and gentlemen, we will now want to invite members of the press to have a short Q and A before we go to the climax. But I rather we should have been, yes, we'll invite both mayors to come here. We'll do a 10-minute press up, presser, and then after that, we'll do the confirment of the honorary citizenship. So please raise your hands if you have a question and I'll, we'll take it from there. Yes, Mr. Paderi. You can come closer so that the microphone can pick your question.
Thank you very much, President Jonas, and of course, I have two questions for Mayor Bart. The first one is, we all know that Banjul City Council don't have enough resources to maintain this huge project, 3.2 million euro. How are you going to help maintain the project? That's number one. And number two, very important, how do you... Okay, the mic, okay. The second question is, up to recently, people have not been seeing or hearing about the project. Can you explain from your own point of view, what was responsible for that?
Of course, 3.2 million euro is a lot of money and we are very grateful that Europe have chosen this project because it's the most important project between cities in Europe. And I'm convinced that it's not only this project now which we have, we think about to extend that for one year, I think, because we had the COVID and so on and so on and it was impossible for us to come here because of a lot of things and we have to finish that project very good. But after that project, we need to collaborate in the next years and we are looking for new sources. We are going to this Kesh that also in our own city. But it's for sure that after this very important project, we will succeed with collaboration and interaction with Banjul. It's very important, this project, that we make it visible. I said, we have a lot of things in that project that aren't clear. But in the next few months and next year, it will be more visible and it will be very important for the Banjulans. For example, I visited yesterday the mangroves and I saw it with my own eyes. It's the balance between nature and tourism. We know that also in Europe, in another way. But we have also some problems. We have a lot of tourists at one day who are coming from Brussels and Antwerp and so on. And we have also to look for a balance between nature and tourism. And that are very, very, very important things of the project who are important also for the future, for the future proof of Banjul, okay?
Let me just help Mayor Bart here because the question was how can we sustainability? I think that was a problem. So what I want to say here is, indeed, we have thought of that and if you look at the project, you see that we have the coconuts and I said, the coconuts are there to also empower women because the coconuts, when they arrived, we can bring them down also and women can sell it. So that's an empowerment, not only that they are there for the erosion, but we can use it for other things. And I said it many times in the town hall. We have a radio and everybody knows that from radio you can have resources. The town hall, the hall also is there. We have a hall that will have a capacity of about 700 people. Of course, it is there also, we are there also to, it will also be renting out. We will be renting out these halls to Banjulians, even though for a very reasonable sum. And then we have the studio, the recording studio. The recording studio also is a way of earning also money. So if you look at the concept of the project, you can see that there are ways of getting money for sustainability. I think this was what you were asking for.
Having said that, things can happen, you know, so many things can go wrong. What if Banjul City Council with the town hall, with the radio, with the studio still is not able to generate enough funds to sustain the project? Will Ostends come in and help?
I'm not going to be his mouthpiece, but I overheard him saying that they are mobilizing resources to help us sustain this project. Mayor, I think that's what he said, yes.
I think it's very important we help people. But it's more important that we help people that they can be in the future on her own, that they don't need help anymore. And that's, that's the goal we have. So of course, we are going to help. We have, we are going to learn the people to look for themselves and that is the goal of our city council in Ostend.
Well, I'm Adam Fadera, working for Home Digital FM and Member Care TV. Well, I have only few questions for you pertaining to the project. There are a lot of talks about the project. Up to recent, we heard of an audio about a woman who is in Belgium. In the audio, believe that she's in Austin and then the lady's name is Wan-Loli Fofana. And in the audio, she said she was being sent to recover a stolen money, amount of 10 million dollars from the project. Well, my questions are, if you know Loli Fofana, if yes, is she working for your council? And the other question is, is there any information on your debts that there are stolen money from this project? If yes, what would be your actions? Thank you.
I'm very sorry, I don't know that woman. And I don't know her name and she's not working for my city. And what I know is that, I think Jonas, a few weeks ago, or a few months ago, there was an audit. Last summer, there was an audit, an official audit, and there was not one thing that was a problem. So Europe did that audit and there were no, there was no money who was stolen. So I'm very disappointed for you, but there are no problems with the project on a financial way. And we decided also to, in this meeting we had with the CEO, that we have to look for the transactions in the future and it will be very clear and very transparent and that's the purpose. Before I was a politician, I was a banker. And before I was mayor, I was the minister of finance in my country. So I am very concerned about finances and I can assure you there are no problems with the project for the moment.
Thank you so much. I am Thabora Bojang from The Standard newspaper. My question to the mayor from Ostend would be, after seeing, after your assessment and seeing how much the project has gone in terms of its implementation, how much of trust have this gone in terms of bringing your bilaterals with the city of Banjul? I mean, how much of trust has this gone in terms of building your partnership with the city of Banjul?
Having seen the project at this time, you have assessed the situation as of now, how much do you trust Banjul City Council in the implementation?
As we have, we had very good meetings. I'm not only here to visit and to look at the project. We had several meetings. My deputy mayor, Silke Behr, is responsible for the project in my city council. She has the lead and she's a woman. She's very strong. And she have experience. And that's, we trust the city of Banjul in this project very well. We are convinced that we will finish this project in the interest of the Banjulans. Not for us, as Lord Mayor said. It's not for the mayor of Ostend, it's not for the mayor of Banjul. It's important for you, for the Banjulans. And we are working together very well and we are going to work in the next few months to finish that project and I said, we are going to extend that because we had COVID and we will finish all the projects 100%.
Just allow me to just make a follow-up of where the mayor stops. I think something very important to clear here, at least to clarify here. 3.2 million euro was not put in a bag and transported to Banjul City Council. And I am not talking here for those who understand how projects work or those who are in the EU system, no. I am talking to those like me who does not understand how projects work. Okay, it goes like this. When we said the projects are in phases. So when we want to implement something, for example, the coconuts, the budget is there already. The CEO, Ann Gano, Mr. Gano, and Mamla Jasi, with the steering committee team, will sit down, look at the budget and send it to Silke together with Jonas. And then they will transfer the 10 dollars that we said is for the coconuts. And when that is finished, Jonas, as the coordinator, will audit that and see that that is in order and then we move again to another project, to another phase. When that is not in order, we have to stop there, play it, and then move on to another phase. And I am happy that the confidence of the mayor is high, especially when it is said that seeing is believing. So this is just what I wanted to add. It's not that they have given Rahim Malik Law 3 million in a bag and I am working with it. I wish it is like that, but unfortunately, it is not like that. And I, as a mayor, I don't have any say in what they are spending or what they are doing. There is a steering committee and a project team with the project manager and the project coordinator. And I am not a signatory in any account or in anything. Therefore, I cannot be the one who will stole money, 10 million from the project. Thank you.
Thank you. My this question goes to the mayor of Banjul. My question goes to the mayor of Banjul. Lord Mayor, your critics are saying that you found this EU project in council. What do you have to say on that? Some of your critics are saying that you found this EU project in council. What do you have to say on that?
Thank you very much. What I can say is, and I said it, I always give credit where credit is due. I found the sister link here, definitely. I will never ever try to take a hard, unhard work of other mayors, not even mayors, but other people. I don't do that. I give credit where credit is due. But also, the credit that belongs to us, we will take it, whether you give it to us or not because it was not easy to have this project. And thanks to Mayor Bart because he is the mayor of Ostend and without Ostend, we could not have this money. And I keep saying this every time. Once upon a time, when I came into power, into office, excuse me, I was the one who went directly to the ambassador, the then ambassador. went directly to the ambassador, the then Ambassador of EU, and I want to thank him. And this EU project was related to me by a mayor from Cameroon. And I went there and asked the Honorable Ambassador, His Excellency. He said, I don't know about this project. We sat and I called the mayor in Cameroon. He spoke to the ambassador and the ambassador said, let me call Stefan, is my technician. And Stefan came and said, let me call you back tomorrow, I'm going to make a research. The next day, he called me and you all heard the ambassador said it right here in my office. Stefan called me and said, yes, it's possible, but then you have to have a European partner. And this is how they came in. And thanks to Mayor Bart, who believes, who believes in the leadership of a woman. So no, I did not fund the EU project here, we dig over it and bring it to Banjul.
We'll take two more questions, one from you and one from you. I haven't seen the ladies. I haven't seen the ladies yet.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board mayor, Rahim Ali Glou, and her counterpart from Austin for successful collaboration in able to implement the 3.2 million EU project. My question to the Lord Mayor of Austin is, one of the biggest challenges of councils in Africa is how to control the Gabi, the Gabi collection and the disposal. In the Gambia, we've seen the EU project have provided about 5,700 dustbin as well as the trucks, but now disposing of the Gabi is a big challenge because in the Gambia, what they normally do is to burn it. So my question is, do you have anything in plan that you want to collaborate with the Banjul City Council so that there'll be a better way of disposal of the Gabi rather than burning it, which is also bad for the environment?
They recycle it, yes.
Thank you. And my name is Dauda Bia from Bio-Use.
Waste management. Yes, I think it's not only very important for Africa and also not only important for Gambia, it's also important for Europe and even also in my city, we have a lot of projects who are running off of the moment for recycling. It's really a fight, a big fight, and we have to work together to solve that, also for climate. When I'm walking on the beach, I see the plastic and then, and all the other things. We have the same in Europe, on another way, because we are different, that's true. But I think in future, we have worked together for the waste, for recycling, and to work for projects, to work together to do these things away, okay?
Yes, please. Yes, Assalamualaikum. My name is Yusfad Awo from DHK Radio. I have two questions that I want to ask the mayor.
Do you need some microphone?
Yes. First, I want to ask you, yes, but I also want to have the attention of the mayor, but it's okay. Yes, I want to ask you whether you have been happy with what most of the critics were saying, like the mayor have downsized the steering committee of the project. You know, this has been going around in the Gambia. So I want to know whether you are happy with it, you know, downsizing the steering committee of the project. So the other one is, I heard an audio where that Loli Fofana, a Gambian who is residing in Belgium.
I don't know where.
Yes, I don't know whether you know her or you don't know, but I have the audio, so I just want clarity. The lady is claiming, like you have a conversation with the Lord Mayor, that you want to give her a money to bring and help the Gambian people, but the mayor said, you don't have to do that, you have to wait until when our government comes in, that is the party that brought him to KMC, so BCC. So I want to know whether that one is true, because that one also had been in most of the radio stations and it was also WhatsApp audio circulating in the Gambia. So this is what I want to know. Thank you.
About the last thing, I repeat, I don't know that woman, so I can conclude, these are rumors. These are rumors. I don't know that woman. Rumors. And the second thing of the first thing you asked, so about that steering committee, I want an efficient committee. Not the number of persons who are in a committee are important, but that the committee is working efficient and they have to do the things that they had to do. And the number of persons in a steering committee, that's not important for me. They have to do the things that they had to do.
All right, thank you very much. I am Oma Tungara, Star TV. Honorable, thank you. Lord Mayor, I want to talk about the project, because it is said that the project started two years ago, but it was not known until when the town hall meeting started in Banjul. That is when people started talking about the project. So we want to know whether there is any reason why it was put under the carpet.
Can you repeat that question?
I said the project started two years ago, but it was not known in Banjul until when the town hall's meeting started in Banjul. So we want to know whether there is any reason why it was put under the carpet.
There was a lack of visibility about the project and people did not know that the project was ongoing. So that's one of the reasons I'm here, to make that project more visible. You know, you have lawyers in politics, you have persons who studied economics, but I'm a man who studied communications science, so I know how to communicate. And it's true, the project have to be more visible. That's important for the people, the project will have to be clear, the purpose has to be clear, and it will be clear that the project is not for the city or for the mayor, but for the people of Banjul. That's very important for us to make that visible. And that's one of the reasons why I'm the first mayor of Austin who is coming to Banjul. My presence is here to make it more visible.
Let me just add that you made visibility. It is, I think the name is visibility. So you saw, if you want to make visibility, you have to show people something. We could not do visibility when we were starting the project. So now, because we have something to show people, this is why we go out to show, to do the visibility. And this is why my dear brother is here also to help me. And now I think it's more than visible. So there is nothing, we were not hiding anything. It was not that the project was not mature, mature enough to go out. So when it was matured, we deemed it necessary now to go out and do the visibility.
All right, all right, please, please come forward.
My name is Aladi Fati, I'm a freelance journalist. As you all know, currently the country, we are in the election period and then very soon too, we'll go into the mayoral election too. But for instance, in a situation where the mayor did not win the election, will the project stop or not? That's what I want to establish.
I think, I don't know whether you were listening to us, Mr. Fati. This is not about Mayor Lo and Mayor Bart. We know very well that we are politicians. And I said it, I was very clear, I said there were mayors who initiated the Banjul-Austen link and today they are not here. So whether Mayor Lo is there or not, the project still goes because the people of Banjul are here. And as I said, governance is a change. Governance is a change. I cannot be here in the next 20 or 25 years. And definitely, whether I'm here or not, whether Mayor Bart is in Austin or not, the project still goes because it's for the people of Banjul.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Bart and of course, Mayor Rahim Ali Glou. Thank you, members of the press that have asked those questions. What I just wanted to add is the fact that visibility needs partnership and that is why you are here as well, as journalists, all right? At the end of the program, we have two translators, one in Wolof and one in Mandinka, who you would put your cameras on and they will translate the proceedings that we just had here. Having said that, it is now a very, very important moment that we have reached. This is the confirmant of the honorary citizenship on the illustrious guest that has come to visit the Gambia and that is Mayor Bart Tamerline, as an honorary citizen of the Republic of the Gambia, as well as our deputy mayor, Silkay Byrens. They are now Gambians. Confirmed upon them by the mayor of Banjul. So Mayor, please, let's do this ceremony.
My brother, my brother. On behalf of the people of Banjul, on behalf of the people of Banjul and indeed my humble selves and the councillors, we are happy and proud to confirm a honor of citizenship of Banjul to Lord Mayor Bart of the Austin City. We are grateful. And as I said, we are short of words. My brother, here you go. So now you are a citizen of Banjul, yes, and congratulations to you.
Thank you, sister.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now invite the deputy mayor of the city of Austin, Silkay Byrens, also to receive the honorary citizenship of Banjul.
Yes, and to my dear sister. For her, I have to say this, not only because of the project or for her being the deputy mayor of Austin there, but for being a champion of women empowerment. On that note, on behalf of the people of Banjul, again, we confine on you honor of citizenship of Banjul.
Thank you very much.
That's my best sister. Yeah, thank you.
I'm very, very proud to be a citizen of Banjul now. I have been coming here for the last 20 years. I was here for the first time in 2002, so for me, it's even emotional to get this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, both mayors and both deputy mayors and of course, members of the high table. It is said that all is well that ends well. So we are all looking forward that when these projects are complete, we will have a ceremony to mark an achievement that will be remembered for posterity. On that note, we want to thank the mayors for coming and your delegation and of course, the project implementers and of course, the staff of Banjul City Council.
I just want to say a little bit in Wolof.
Oh, the Lord Mayor has asked me that she wants to say a little bit in the Wolof language, we'll give her the podium.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, uh, uh, thank you very much. I have, I think I have dealt with the proceedings right now. So members of the press, you can wait for the translations in Mandinka and Wolof, who now like the two mayors and their team to take leave of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done, Mayor, well done.
Love like fire. Wow. Love, love like fire. I'm young, right? I feel I'm young, fun, love. Skin care, 2020, let you have it. Wow. Feel like my hair, fun, care zero tash. Perfect skin. Skin care, fast, soon, Eric, make a day of fair, Eric. Blue, lean, so, like, Eric. Man, I'm, we're not a problem system skin, you know, I'm young, fun, love. Feel young, do you? Um, some, hard, it, I'm the jammy. It's not the task of links on the lawn, I'm the don't hassle, Bella, come. In a, my link, connect, why, just in case, come, Nico, guy, the, the, Anka, just in case, little help. I'm young, feel young, do you? Skin care plus, see, bah, regular, no, don't, eh, bah, bah, eh. Funny, let me, let me, let me, products, you bah. To Paris, to Italy, to USA, ah, do, feel like, is that? Ball, and then, to Sweden. Funny, let me, let me, products, but it, I mean, that, that, you, you, like, yeah, ma, ah. Natural beauty, that melon dropping, we do have stuff for you as well. And we see skincare products, like, you can chew, but, I mean, ah, funny, let me, yeah. In fact, sah, last commercial, bin, the phone, what, when, when, the, your, doctor, I, cover. Nine, eight, great, right, like, wow. We do have bundles as well. Hair, so, let me, no, no, you, you, can, I, the, 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 wow.